We'll call this September 23rd Council Meeting to Order. Thank all of y'all for being here. It is a special night with officers being sworn in to serve the citizen as well as other things that are going on with service awards and proclamations. At this time, would you please stand as we have an invocation and a pledge of allegiance? Since our pastor is detained at this time, allow me to offer it up. Our gracious kind heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for allowing each person here to be here tonight. We thank you for the representation they have, for the areas they have in our city. We thank you for all the citizens. I thank you for this council, Father, and just pray that no matter what decision is to be made, that they pause and think about it and put the citizens at first in every decision they make. I ask that you give them the patience of Job in making a decision and really thinking about it. I ask you to give them the wisdom of Solomon, Father, and most of all, I ask that you give them the love of Jesus in any decisions we make. Let every decision we make here at the city be what you get, guide us as best for all the citizens in Benton. Father, I ask all these things in the son's precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please be seated. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Steve Brown.
Here.
Frank, I haven't called your name yet. Frank Baptist.
Present.
Jocelyn Cash.
Present.
Evelyn Reed.
Here.
Bill Donner.
Here.
Jeff Morrow.
Here.
Judd Hart.
Here.
James Hertzfield.
Here.
Steve Lee.
Jeff Hamm.
Here.
There'll be nine present.
Nine present tonight, thank you. All right, everyone's had a chance to read the minutes. I have a motion concerning the...
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, at this time, let's move into the service awards.
Jack Wood started his career as a Benton firefighter on September the 13th, 1999. He was promoted to fire engineer in 2011. Jack currently holds the rank of fire captain as assigned to Station Two. Jack is also a member of Arkansas Task Force One. He is a Glen Rose High School graduate, enjoys spending time with his sweetheart, Deidra Gaser, hunting and fishing. Captain Patrick Baker began his law enforcement career with the Benton Police Department 20 years ago on September the 20th, 1999. He worked his way up through the ranks from patrol officer to his current rank of captain. Captain Baker is a certified professional instructor, accident reconstructionist, firearms instructor, orator, and computer voice stress analyst. He is married to Robin Baker and has two children, Eleanor and Vance.
Yes. Judge Aron, if you could go forward. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, for giving us the opportunity to introduce and recognize new, find new police officers for the Benton Police Department. They are, and I'd like to welcome Charles Anderson, Jesus Philiberti, Stacy Jones, Joseph McKinley, and Tiara Coffey. Every group that we get, I always think, man, this is the best group yet. This could be the best group yet, but we have a lot of good groups. Charles Anderson, born in Pineblood, Arkansas, parents Gil and Patricia Anderson, married to Angel Lee. They have two children, Tinley and Taya. He is a graduate of Whitehall High School. He received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Arkansas in Little Rock. He has extensive interview experience, which can be contributed to his years at the Arkansas State Police Crimes and Children's Division as an investigator. He also has experience with the Arkansas Department of Corrections. Charles Anderson. Jesus Philiberti, born in Puerto Rico, parents Jesus and Carmen Philiberti, married to Sandra. They have one child, Mauricio. He is a graduate of Esquela Lola Rodriguez DTO High School in San German, Puerto Rico. He received his bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Puerto Rico. Jesus has experience with the Department of Corrections in Puerto Rico, where he had duties much like that of a police officer here. He also has experience with the Arkansas Department of Corrections. Jesus Philiberti. Stacy Jones, born in Benton, Arkansas, parents Miles and Carol Graham, married to Cody. They have two children, Austin Neefen. She is a graduate of Mount Vernon and Noah High School. She received her associate's degree in criminal justice from Arkansas State University. She has three years of experience as a law enforcement officer, including time with the Arkansas Attorney General's office. She has specialized experience in investigations and with internet crimes against children. Stacy Jones. Joseph McKinley, born in Malvern, Arkansas, parents Keith and Stephanie McKinley, married to Angel. They have two children, Adeline and Ashley. He is a graduate of Sheridan High School. He has served in the Army and is currently a sergeant in the Arkansas National Guard. He is a graduate of airborne and air assault school and was named soldier of the deployment in 2017. Joseph McKinley. Tiara Coffey, born in Little Rock, Arkansas, mother Talanda Coffey. She is a graduate of Little Rock Hall High School. She received her associate's degree in science from Northern Oklahoma College. She has experience from the Arkansas Department of Corrections and Arkansas Juvenile Assessment Treatment Center. Tiara Coffey. I'd now like to ask Judge Aron to come forward to do the oath of office.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you would kind of line up here, if you had members of your family here, I wish, I think they would be happy if you'd come and join them if not this time. I always, I say this every time, and a minute no less this time than ever. That is, it's a pleasure and an honor to get to do this. I want to especially thank Steve Hodges, the mayor, and members of the council for allowing me to do so. So many families, so many ways they share in what you do every day. Okay, I always try to ask one final question. You've been through lots of exams and training, so I know you're well qualified. If you miss this question, Officer McKinley, is that him?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what it is? Do you remember what it was to recycle and basic training?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you miss this question, you go back to week one. We saw all of you. We'll put you pressure on. It's a really simple question. We like to use acronyms in America. What's the acronym of SWAT? S-W-A-T. Any of you? Chief?
Special Forces Tactics.
Perfect. None of you have to recycle. In all seriousness, Sling County is blessed with extremely professional law enforcement agencies, and we all get very proud of all of the Sling County Benton Police Departments and armed attorneys. They are because of the men and women who've come before you, so I encourage you to earn that and build one. If you would now, please raise your right hand with feet after me. I am state your name.
I am the Trump candidate.
Solomon Swir.
Solomon Swir.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
With the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution.
The State of Arkansas.
The State of Arkansas.
And I will fully and faithfully discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
And with every police officer.
Every police officer.
Point where time is about to begin. Congratulations.
I failed to mention that, other than Stacy Jones, who's already certified, the other four started the academy yesterday, so this was day two for them in the academy, and day two was supposedly the hardest, so they had a hard day today. Thank y'all very much, I'm proud to have y'all aboard.
Ready? All right, we have a proclamation. We actually have three tonight. Whereas the... I'm a little loud. I do not know. Whereas the pink ribbon reminds us that breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer in women and the second most common cause of cancer deaths in women in the United States. When breast cancer is detected in the early stage, there's a 99% and 85% five-year survival rate for localized and regional female breast cancer respectively. However, when breast cancer is detected, when it has already spread to distant parts of the body, the five-year survival rate is 27%. And whereas 30 of the 75 counties in Arkansas do not have fixed mammograph... Oh, correct. Monography, I got it. Facilities, and this creates a barrier for many women to easily access monography, thereby possibly increasing their mortality rate. And whereas breast cancer knows no boundaries, be it age, gender, socioeconomic status, or geographical location, despite tremendous progress for research, breakthroughs for breast cancer, more than 42,000 people still die of breast cancer every year in the United States. And whereas it is estimated that in the United States, 268,600 women and 2,670 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer during 2019, and approximately 41,760 women and 500 men will die of the disease. In Arkansas this year, an estimated 2,210 new cases in females will be detected and 410 breast cancer deaths will occur. And whereas October is Natural Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and October the 4th is designated as Go Pink for the Cure Day, to bring awareness of the importance of monography and to renew its commitment to removing obstacles for women from seeking mammograms. Now, therefore, Tom Farmer, acting under his authority as mayor of the City of Benton, Arkansas, by virtue of the authority invested in him by the laws of the state of Arkansas, does hereby proclaim October the 4th, 2019, as Go Pink for the Cure Day. And the City of Benton urges all fellow citizens to join him in helping to promote efforts for the prevention and treatment of the steadily disease.
Next one, and I would recognize Ms. Sybil Womack, who turned 100 years old. Yes, and I want to just say that before she raised this, it was my great honor for at least to attend her church and listen to her pastor preach as they celebrated life with her birthday. And I thank Mr. Brent Houston for allowing me to be along with that. At this time, Ms. Sidney, would you read that, please?
Recognizing the 100th birthday of Ms. Sybil Womack, whereas longevity of life is a blessing for an individual and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, and experiences this individual brings to all, and whereas the City of Benton recognizes with respect and admiration the contributions of senior citizens to our community. And whereas Ms. Sybil, as she's fondly called, was born in Murfreesboro, Arkansas, on September the 22nd, 1919. And whereas Ms. Sybil moved to the City of Benton in 1946 along with her new husband, Leroy, where she has resided ever since. And whereas Ms. Sybil has been a faithful member of the North Side Church of Christ for the past 70 years, where she taught the first grade Bible class for more than 30 years. And whereas Ms. Sybil was married to Leroy Womack for approximately 46 years until he passed in 1992. And whereas Ms. Sybil has two children, Roy Womack and Joyce Lacy, and is a proud grandmother to two grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. And whereas Ms. Sybil, over the course of her lifetime, has sent hundreds, if not thousands of cards of encouragement to her family, friends, and members of her church family as her personal ministry and touched many lives as a result. Now, for Tom Farmer, acting under his authority as mayor of the City of Benton, does hereby proclaim Sunday, September the 22nd, as Sybil Womack Day, and the City of Benton, and urges all citizens to join him in wishing Ms. Sybil many, many more happy, productive years.
Mr. Patricia, if you would come forward. Ms. Johnson, if you would come forward. This is a proclamation of thank you for the many residents of our community that decided to move here hundreds of years ago, live in this community, settle in this community, raise their family in this community. You'll stand right here, Ms. Patricia, right between Ms. Jocelyn and I. And we're gonna do it like this. Can you tell you, all right, Ms. Sidney?
Whereas many African-American families have made the City of Benton their home since 1906, and whereas through contributions to our community, those families have played a vital role in the history of our city by choosing to settle down and raise a family here in Benton. And whereas our nation's story of progress is captured in countless tales of individuals who overcame tremendous obstacles to forge new trails that have shaped our country's pathways. And whereas through hard work and unwavering faith in America's promise of equal opportunity, generations of determined men and women have joined in a common purpose to build a better future for our children. And whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. Now, therefore, Tom Farmer, acting under his authority as mayor of the City of Benton, Arkansas, does hereby proclaim September 2019 as a time to recognize the African-American community in the City of Benton, and calls all the people of Benton, Arkansas, to join their fellow citizens in recognizing this special observance.
Thank you. Thanks. Ms. Johnson.
All right. We'll start with the committee's reports and motion, and we'll start with Council Member Cash, please. Do you have anything for us to report or ordinances you'd like to present?
I make a motion for the first reading of Ordinance Number 67 of 2019.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of Ordinance Number 67 of 2019.
Ordinance 67 of 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the purchase of a voice-over IP phone system for the city declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council adopted 2019 general fund budget, Ordinance 1 of 2019. And whereas the City Council needs to amend the 2019 general fund budget in order to acquire a voice-over IP phone system for the city as set forth in Exhibit 1 to this ordinance, which will reduce the city's current monthly expenses. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section 1 pursuant to the authority granted in ACA, Section 1458-202 and 1458-203, the City Council does hereby amend the fiscal year 2019 City of Benton budget as adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here to as Exhibit 1 to this ordinance and are fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section 2 is hereby found and determined there's an immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds as set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public concerning this? Any comments from the council? All right, here none. Council Member Cash, and do you have something else for us?
Yes, I make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Can you take a vote, please?
James Hertzfield. Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Murphy. Oh, sorry, Steve Brown.
Yes.
I've been called word.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
I apologize. Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
All right, Council Member Cash, would you like to make an additional motion?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 67 of 2019, have the readings by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 67 of 2019 by the reading title only.
Ordinance Number 67 of 2019, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the purchase of a voice-over IP phone system for the city declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All right, please take a vote.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. All right, Ordinance Number 67 of 2019 has duly passed.
Council Member Cash, anything else?
Yes, I make a motion to, for the first reading of Ordinance Number 68 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of Ordinance Number 68 of 2019, please.
Ordinance Number 68, 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the Public Safety Fund is adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the transfer of funds within the Fire Department declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council adopted the 2019 Public Safety Fund budget in Ordinance 1 of 2019. And whereas the City Council needs to amend the 2019 general fund budget in order to do monetary transfers of budgeted funds as set forth in Exhibit 1 to this ordinance. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section 1 pursuant to the authority granted in ACA, Section 1458-202 and 1458-203, the City Council does hereby amend the fiscal year 2019 City of Benton budget as adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here to as Exhibit 1 to this ordinance and are fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section 2 is hereby found and determined there's an immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds as set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? All right, Council Member Cash, do you have anything else?
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Please take a vote.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
All right, Council Member Cash.
Yes, I make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 68 of 2019, on the second and third readings by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance Number 68 of 2019, by the second and third reading by title only.
Ordinance Number 68, 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the Public Safety Fund is adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the transfer of funds within the Fire Department declaring emergency and for the purposes.
All right, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Please take a vote.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
All right, Council Member Cash.
I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
I make a motion for the first reading of Ordinance Number 69 of 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of Ordinance Number 69 of 2019.
Ordinance Number 69, 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the monetary transfer of budgeted funds within the Fire Department declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the City Council adopted the 2019 general fund budget in Ordinance 1 of 2019. Whereas the City Council needs to amend the 2019 general fund budget in order to authorize the monetary transfer of budgeted funds for the Fire Department as set forth in Exhibit 1 to this ordinance. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of City of Benton, Arkansas, Section 1 pursuant to the authority granted in ACA, Section 1458-202 and 1458-203, the City Council does power amend the fiscal year 2019 City of Benton budget as adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here to as Exhibit 1 to this ordinance and are fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section 2 is hereby found and determined there's an immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds as set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect immediately from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on the Ordinance Number 69? Comments from the council?
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jocelyn Cash.
Yes.
All right, Council Member Cash, do you have anything else?
Yes, I make a motion, I make a motion to pass the emergency clause. No, I skipped one. I make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 69 of 2019 and have the readings by title only.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt Ordinance 69 of 2019 by the second and third reading title only.
Ordinance Number 69, 2019, ordinance amending the 2019 budget for the general funds adopted in Ordinance 1 of 2019, authorizing the monetary transfer of budgeted funds within the Fire Department declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, any comments about Ordinance Number 69 from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.[1695.23]
All right, Councilmember Cash.
Yes, I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Carrie Mur- I'm shoot. Can't go fast.
Yes.
No, Steve Brown.
Yes.
Apologize. Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
My mind's already going on to something else, and that's my problem.
Ordinance sixty-nine of two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Cash, do you have anything else for us?
I do, thank you. I make a motion for the first reading of ordinance number seventy of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy of two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance number seventy of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance one, two thousand nineteen, authorizing the purchase of a new speaker system for city events declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council adopted the two thousand nineteen general fund budget ordinance one of two thousand nineteen. And whereas the city council needs to amend the two thousand nineteen general fund budget in order to acquire a new speaker system for city events is set forth in exhibit one to this ordinance. Therefore, forbid ordained by the city council of city of Benton, Arkansas, section one. Pursuant to the authority granted in ACA section fourteen fifty-eight two oh two and fourteen fifty-eight two oh three, the city council does hereby amend the fiscal year two thousand nineteen city of Benton budget as adopted in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here to is exhibit one to this ordinance and are more fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section two is hereby found and determined there is immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds is set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety shall be in full force and effective me from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments on ordinance number seventy from the public? Any comments from the council?
I make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading. Please take a vote.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Councilmember Cash, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number seventy of two thousand nineteen and read by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy of two thousand nineteen to be read by title only, please.
Ordinance number seventy of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen, authorizing the purchase of a new speaker system for city events declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? And please take a vote.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
Councilmember Cash.
Yes, I make a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Cash, do you have anything else?
I do not, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, community service and animal control, Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir, I'd like to ask for the first reading of ordinance seventy-one of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance seventy-one of two thousand nineteen.
Ordinance seventy-one of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance rezoning certain land in the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application for rezoning was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas, by Rick Newby, requesting that the land hereafter described located at five oh four Oak Hill be zoned from R two to C one. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on September the tenth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. for the purpose of hearing said application, the notice that hearing had been published in a newspaper having a bona fide circulation in Saline County, Arkansas, with evidence having been submitted that all property owners or leases within three hundred feet of the property have been notified of said hearing. And at said hearing, the planning commission recommended to the city council that such request be granted. And whereas the city council of city of Benton, Arkansas, desires to rezone the following property from R two to C one. Now therefore, it be ordained by the city council of city of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, the following described property is hereby rezoned from R two to C one. It's lot one, Oak Hill, Benton, Saline County, Arkansas. Section two, the city council having found that the immediate rezoning of this property will allow commercial utilization of the property commenced thereon, which will be of a benefit to the local economy, hereby declares an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect after its passage and approval.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? All right, Councilmember Reed.
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading. Please take a vote.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Councilmember Reed.
Motion to adopt ordinance seventy-one on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy-one by the second, third reading by title only.
Ordinance number seventy-one, two thousand nineteen, an ordinance rezoning certain land in the city of Benton, Saline County, Arkansas, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Now can I ask you?
Yes.
That was C two, right?
No, I wrote it correctly. I wrote it correctly, and Brad Jordan.
Brad, apologize.
So it was perfect.
Just making sure that I wrote it.
I had to ask because I didn't want to call that everybody's attention.
Yes, at the end of the agenda meeting, Mr. Jordan came up and said he's made a mistake. So. All right.
Thank you, I was just confused again.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Ordinance number seventy-one, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir, at this time, I make a motion for this first reading of ordinance seventy-two of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy-two of two thousand nineteen, please.
Ordinance number seventy-two of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance providing for conditional use for a church at the corner of Alcoa Road and Boone Road, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas an application for conditional use permit was filed with the planning commission of the city of Benton, Arkansas, by Midtown Church, requesting that a property at the corner of Alcoa Road and Boone Road, and you'll see the parcel number there, be issued a conditional use permit for the operations of a church in an R two zone. And whereas the planning commission ordered a public hearing to be held on the tenth day of September, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. for the purpose of hearing said application. That notice of said hearing had been published in a newspaper having a bona fide circulation in Saline County, Arkansas, with evidence having been submitted that all property owners or leases within three hundred feet of the property here and after described have, having either consented to or been notified of said hearing. And at said hearing, the planning commission resolved to recommend to the city council of the city of Benton that the application for a conditional use permit be granted. And whereas the city council of the city of Benton desires to grant a conditional use permit to Midtown Church for the operations of a church in an R two zone at the above location, now the forbid ordained by the city council of the city of Benton. Section one, Midtown Church is hereby granted a conditional use permit for the operations of a church at the following location, the corner of Alcoa Road and Boone Road, Arkansas, and you'll see the parcel number. Section two, it is hereby found and determined there is an immediate need to authorize the conditional use of the property to allow for the construction of a church. Therefore, an emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effect after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on ordinance number seventy-two? Comments from the council? All right.
Motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Please take a vote.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Motion to adopt ordinance seventy-two on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance seventy-two by the second, third reading of title only. Please read them.
Ordinance number seventy-two of two thousand nineteen, an ordinance providing for a conditional use for a church at the corner of Alcoa Road and Boone Road, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Lee, I mean Steve Brown.
Yes.
I'm looking right. Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Are you sure? Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-two, two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, sir, at this time, I make a motion for the first reading of ordinance seventy-three of two thousand nineteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the first reading of ordinance number seventy-three of two thousand nineteen, please.
Ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen, accepting grant funds from the historic preservation program and authorizing expenditure of same, declaring emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the city council adopted the two thousand nineteen general fund budget in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen. And whereas the city council needs to amend the two thousand nineteen general fund budget in order to grant, accept grant funds from Arkansas Historic Preservation Program and authorize this expenditure for the historical preservation training as set forth in exhibit one to this ordinance. Therefore, forbid ordained by the city council of city of Benton, Arkansas, section one. Pursuant to the authority granted in ACA section fourteen fifty-eight two oh two and fourteen fifty-eight two oh three, the city council does hereby amend the fiscal year two thousand nineteen city of Benton budget as adopted in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen. The revised expenditures for the operations of the city are attached here to is exhibit one to this ordinance and are more fully described therein. The adoption of this amendment shall be deemed as appropriation pursuant to the foregoing statutes as well as any other applicable ordinance of the city. Section two is hereby found and determined there is immediate need to amend the budget to appropriate funds is set forth herein. Therefore, emergency exists, and this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety. It shall be in full force and effective me from and after its passage and approval.
All right, do we have any comments on ordinance number seventy-three from the public? From the council? If not, please take a vote.
We need to suspend the rules.
We need to suspend the rules.
We need to suspend the rules. Make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second, third reading. Now please take a vote.
Bill Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee, Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance seventy-three on the second and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand nineteen by the reading of title only.
Ordinance number seventy-three, two thousand nineteen, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen budget for the general funds adopted in ordinance one of two thousand nineteen, accepting grant program, accepting grant funds from the historic preservation program and authorizing expenditure of same, declaring emergency and for other purposes.
All right, we have any comments from the public? From the council? Please take a vote.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Judd Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
All right, do we have any comments on ordinance number seventy-three from the public? From the council? All right, if not, please take a vote.
We need to suspend the rules. We need to suspend the rules first.
We need to suspend the rules. Make a motion to suspend the rules for the second and third reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for the second and third reading. Now, please take a vote.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Lee. I mean, Steve Brown.
Yes.
I'm looking, right.
Oh, man. Okay. Steve Brown was cursed.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause. Please take a vote.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
Resolution number seventy-two, two thousand nineteen, has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, street and drainage. Councilmember Hamm, do you have anything for us tonight?
I'd like to discuss, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Personnel, Health, and Safety Committee. Mr. Donner, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have resolution number sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen I'd like to bring up to the council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the reading of resolution number sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen.
Resolution sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen, a resolution adopting an amendment to the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan and Trust. Whereas the Benton City Council has previously adopted and amended the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan and by prior resolution deemed to have sole and exclusive authority to consider and adopt all proposed plan amendments. And whereas subsequent to Benton City Council ordaining the establishment of a Public Utility Commission to manage and operate the Utilities Department, there have, there has been a mutual effort to sever the administrative and personal ties between the two entities. And whereas it recognized that the Public Utility Commission as the employer does not have any oversight or authority for the administration and operation of its employees' pension plan, a function that is currently delegated to a committee composed of the City of Benton Mayor, the Chairman of the City of Benton Finance Committee, and the City of Benton Finance Director. And whereas it is alleged that the interest of the Utilities Employees and their pension plan will be more effectively served by an administrative committee made up of representatives from within the department. And now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. The City of Benton hereby adopts an amendment to the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan that revises Article Two, Section seven point oh one, plan administrator to read as follows. Benton Utilities General Manager, Chief Financial Officer, and Human Resources Director, as well as a member of the Benton Utility, Benton Utility Commission, shall serve as administrative committee. Be it further resolved that in no way does this amendment minimize the Benton City Council's authority to make future amendments to the Utility Employee Pension Plan.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on resolution number sixty-seven? From the council? If not, please take a vote.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
All right, resolution sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen has duly passed. Mr. Donner, anything else?
Yes, sir. I have resolution number sixty-eight, two thousand nineteen. I'd like it to be read this time.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the reading of resolution number sixty-eight of two thousand nineteen.
Resolution sixty-eight, two thousand nineteen, a resolution recognizing services of Battalion Chief Greg Ford to the citizens of Benton and awarding him his badge and helmet in recognition of those services. Whereas Battalion Chief Greg Ford has served the citizens of Benton for approximately thirty-two years as a firefighter. And whereas after his years of service to the city, he is retiring. And whereas the city wishes to thank Battalion Chief Greg Ford for his dedicated services to our community by presenting him with his badge and helmet in recognition of those outstanding services. Now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas, that section one, the equipment listed in the attached document, exhibit one, is hereby declared surplus and shall be presented to Battalion Chief Greg Ford in recognition of his services to our, to this community.
All right, do we have any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Hearing none, please take a vote.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee. Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
All right, ordinance number seventy-two, two thousand nineteen, has duly passed. Councilmember Reed, do you have anything else for us?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, street and drainage. Councilmember Hamm, do you have anything for us tonight?
I'd like to discuss, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to Personnel, Health, and Safety Committee. Mr. Donner, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I have resolution number sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen I'd like to bring up to the council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the reading of resolution number sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen. Resolution sixty-seven of two thousand nineteen, a resolution adopting an amendment to the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan and Trust.
Whereas the Benton City Council has previously adopted and amended the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan and by prior resolution deemed to have sole and exclusive authority to consider and adopt all proposed plan amendments. And whereas subsequent to Benton City Council ordaining the establishment of a Public Utility Commission to manage and operate the Utilities Department, there have, there has been a mutual effort to sever the administrative and personal ties between the two entities. And whereas it recognized that the Public Utility Commission as the employer does not have any oversight or authority for the administration and operation of its employees' pension plan, a function that is currently delegated to a committee composed of the City of Benton Mayor, the Chairman of the City of Benton Finance Committee, and the City of Benton Finance Director. And whereas it is alleged that the interest of the Utilities Employees and their pension plan will be more effectively served by an administrative committee made up of representatives from within the department. And now, therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. The City of Benton hereby adopts an amendment to the Benton Utilities Employee Pension Plan that revises Article Two, Section seven point oh one, plan administrator to read as follows. Benton Utilities General Manager, Chief Financial Officer, and Human Resources Director, as well as a member of the Benton Utility, Benton Utility Commission, shall serve as administrative committee. Be it further resolved that in no way does this amendment minimize the Benton City Council's authority to make future amendments to the Utility Employee Pension Plan.
All right, do we have any comments from the public on resolution number sixty-seven? From the council? If not, please take a vote.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
Yes.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.
Evelyn Reed.
Yes.
Phil Donner.
Yes.
Jeff Morrow.
Yes.
Jed Hart.
Yes.
James Hertzfield.
Yes.
Steve Lee.
Yes.
Jeff Hamm.
Yes.
Frank Baptist.
Yes.
Steve Brown.
All right, resolution number seventy-two, two thousand nineteen, has duly passed. Mr. Hart, anything else?
Yes, sir. I have a motion to pass resolution seventy-one, two thousand nineteen. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second to pass resolution number seventy-one, two thousand nineteen. Please read the resolution.
Resolution seventy-one of two thousand nineteen, a resolution authorizing the city to enter a contract with RNS Landscaping for providing lawn care services to the city and for other purposes. Whereas the City of Benton published a request proposal for supplying lawn care services to the city, which the City Council determines to be professional service. And whereas the RFP stated the services would begin April the first, two thousand twenty, and end on October the thirty-first, two thousand twenty, as is for the Parks Department. And whereas after review of the proposal, it's been determined that the contract should be awarded to RNS Landscaping. And whereas the city wishes to enter to an agreement with RNS Landscaping to provide lawn services to the City of Benton Parks Department for the sum of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. Now, therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Benton, Arkansas. Section one, the mayor's seat clerk hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Benton a contract with RNS Landscaping providing lawn care services for the City of Benton Parks Department and to pay the agreed upon compensation when due.
All right, any comments from the public on resolution number seventy-one? From the council? If not, please take a vote.
Joshua Cash.
Yes.